Good evening and welcome to the May 8th Ocean Side Planning Commission meeting. If we could get everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all.
Thank you. City Planner, can you please do the roll call?
Certainly. Chair Rosales.
Present.
Vice Chair Morrissey.
Here.
Commissioner Balma.
Here.
Commissioner Anthony.
Here.
Commissioner Dodds.
Present.
Commissioner Simons.
Here.
And Commissioner Malik.
Here.
Let the record show, we have the full membership of the Planning Commission here and we have a corps.
Thank you. All right, communications on matters not on tonight's agenda. Do we have any slips to speak?
Chair Rosales, we do not this evening.
Great, thank you. We'll go to approval of our minutes from our last meeting, April 24th. Any discussion? If not, I'll look for a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes?
Okay. We have a motion, Vice Chair Morrissey, second, Commissioner Malik. Go ahead and vote.
Let the record show that the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. I don't see anything listed on our consent calendar for tonight or transportation items, so we'll go to our public hearings. We do have three items tonight. I'll start with our first one. Item four is consideration of development plan and a conditional use permit and regular coastal permit to allow construction of two paddle tennis courts at 222 South Coast Highway. I'll open up the disclosures. I read the staff report and unfamiliar with the sport. I played pickle tennis and tennis, pickle tennis, pickleball and tennis, but this is a new one, so I'm eager to hear. Commitment Vice Chair Morrissey.
Reviewed the documents and familiar with the site.
Thank you. Commissioner Dodds.
Read the staff report and familiar with the area and went by the area.
Thank you. Commissioner Balma.
Staff report and.
Familiar with the site.
Thank you. Commissioner Simons.
Same.
Commissioner Malik.
Read the reports, familiar with the site.
Thank you. And Commissioner Anthony.
Read the report.
Thank you. Good evening, Dane, how are you?
I'm well. Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. My name is Dane Thompson. I'm with the Planning Division. I'll be presenting item four tonight, the Padell California Project. The project's site is located on the east side of Coast Highway and between Topeka Street and Michigan Street, within the townsite community. Here is a visual of the site as it exists today, that the applicants are intending to develop. The project is a request for a development plan, conditional use permit, and regular coastal permit to construct and operate two Padell tennis courts with an associated Padell is similar to pickleball or racquetball. It has hard paddles instead of strong rackets. The walls can actually be used in gameplay and the courts are much smaller than regular tennis courts. The courts would be 10 meters wide by 20 meters deep. That comes out to about 30 feet wide by 70 feet deep. The ends are wrapped with glass walls and then netting will be on top of that. It will total about 16 feet tall. For your reference, standard tennis court fencing is about 12 feet tall. If approved, this facility would be the first of its kind in North County. It would be the second of its kind for the region just behind the Ocean Beach facility. Here's a rendering of how the project site would look. Currently, there is an existing dilapidated trailer on site that would be rehabilitated and turned into the office and bathroom. Parking would come from the rear off the alley and would be located right next to the office Because commercial recreational facilities are conditionally permitted in the C2 zone, staff added the following conditions: limiting hours of operation to 7:00 a.m. through 10:00 p.m., lighting must be shut off when not in use, noise attenuating materials are provided in the rear of the facility to reduce the sound that travels to the residential properties to the east. Also, additional measures could be required by staff should the use become a nuisance in the future. Staff reviewed this project and found it to be in conformance with all codes and policies. The project is consistent with the general plan, specifically the land use, economic development, energy and climate action elements, in that it helps provide residents and workers the opportunity to live, work, and play in their community. It also builds on Ocean Side's reputation as an active lifestyle hub and would bring in people from other parts of the region. The project is consistent with the zoning ordinance. Commercial recreational facilities are permitted with a conditional use permit in the coastal general commercial district. The project conforms to the local coastal program and that is compatible with existing development. The project would also be closing the existing curb cut on site, which would add public parking in the coastal zone. And the project is consistent with municipal code and would comply with the noise, graffiti removal, lighting. The applicants have complied with the city's enhanced notification policy by holding an open house, a virtual open house, on October 11th at 5:00 p.m. Only a handful of residents and business owners showed up. Most of their comments and questions were about the sport itself and how the facility would be operated. Staff received two letters from the public, one in support and one requesting pickleball courts. With that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission by motion confirm issuance of a Class 32 categorical exemption per SEQA Article 19, Section 15332, infill development projects, and adopt Planning Commission Resolution Number 2023 P13, proving development plan P226, conditional use permit COP226, and regular coastal permit RC226 for the construction and operation of two Padell tennis courts at 222 South Coast Highway. That concludes my presentation. The applicant is here as well and they have a short presentation. You will both be available for any questions. Thank you.
Dane, I had a couple of questions, if you don't mind. Two things. Attachment four is a sound analysis and thanks for including that because that was the first thing I thought of because I know pickleball, new courts are, they have an issue of noisy sometimes and complaints. Was that a condition for the applicant to do the sound analysis in order to get just in front of us?
So staff required it just to see what their operations could look like. As you can see from that analysis, the ambient noise from Coast Highway is already pushing the thresholds of the commercial district at that area.
Right. That's good to see. Second question, I thought I saw in one of your slides a bullet point about we're being asked to approve a conditional use permit if there were some issue later on that could be added to. Can you explain what that process would be? Is that an administrative add-on on your part or does it come back here?
So Chair, staff added that condition that some added measures may be required by staff so they wouldn't be, the applicants or the operators wouldn't be required to come back to this body for certain things. Substantial changes would have to come back to this body if conditions are added or removed like that.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Dodds, go ahead.
Yes, I have a few questions. Back to the sound analysis, I noticed that you took measurements from the street, from Coast Highway, and then from the tennis court. Were there any measurements taken from behind the tennis court where the neighborhood starts? Because that's where the main noise complaint is going to come from. I would like to see what the DB levels are from behind the court going towards the neighborhood.
Commissioner Dodds, I don't believe that they took that, they used that side of the project site as one of their monitoring safety.
Okay. The other question I have is, is there going to be staffing at the facility? First of all, is the facility 20, is it open seven days a week?
Sorry, can you repeat that?
Is the facility going to be open seven days a week? Because it just, you gave hours from 7:00 to 10:00, but you didn't say how many days.
I believe it would be open seven days a week, but I'll defer to the applicant.
Okay. And do you know if it's going to be staffed that entire time?
I'll defer that to the applicant.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Dane. Applicant, if you'd like to come forward, there are at least a couple of questions. If you would introduce yourself and hold up your paddle so we can see what they look like. I'm sorry, is it paddle or Padell?
Padell.
Padell. Is the paddle itself called Padell? What you're holding there, is that Padell or is the game Padell?
Yes.
Padell.
No.
Great, thank you.
Do you guys think a paddle is more powerful?
Go ahead.
Especially what we had.
If you speak into the mic, yeah.
Chair, Commissioners, thanks. Listening to us. I'm from Finland originally. My name is Amir. I met James during our recreational tennis sessions in the Bay Area five years ago and here we are. Couple of years before, we started paddle tennis company. It's one of the fastest growing sports in the world and it's just picking up in New York, Miami, and LA, just started something. It's only gonna get bigger and bigger here. But yeah, many of you might be familiar with pickleball, so we thought that we can bring some racket balls. So paddle is not noisy as pickleball due to the rackets and balls, so you guys try them out.
No demonstration?
Well, there is room here, but yeah, so the ball is very similar to tennis ball. It's just a little bit heavier, so it doesn't bounce as much. And we're gonna go into the presentation so we'll be able to hear, see a bit more. And James, here.
My name is James Bragg. I'm part of Paddle California as well. I myself, I'm a professional pickleball player and I played collegiate tennis, so we really have the passion to bring racket sports to North County and really build this community of this new sport. Our team is here as well, helped us design the landscaping. Sean is a local engineer as well as, and architect that's helped us, that's also local.
All right, so let's get into paddle. Over 25 million players around the world just beginning to catch in the U.S. in the last years and as mentioned before, is the fastest growing racket sport outside of the U.S. And we've had extreme amount of anticipation in the community. I don't know if there's any paddle tennis fans here now, but raise your hands if there is. We get daily phone calls and emails that when is the club gonna open? So hopefully anticipation is gonna be rewarded soon. We have people contacting us all over San Diego County. The only club now, as mentioned before, is in Point Loma and they have seven paddle tennis courts. As you might imagine, that's not enough for all of the Northern County people here anticipating sport to come here. What do paddle courts look like? This is an example from San Diego, paddle club called Tactica. So as you can see, the courts are half the size of a tennis court. It's played in an artificial turf, so it's great for all ages, great for knees. I actually myself played professionally hockey in Finland and it was many years I didn't play much, any sports, but paddle really got me excited about recreational sports again and also competing. But it's really great for all ages, easy to play, but extremely hard to master, so I welcome you all to come and give it a shot. The Plexiglas surrounding the court, that's the ball that bounce from the wall, similar to racquetball or squash. So that's kind of the thing that makes the sport so great and exciting. Just once you hit the ball from the glass, the rally is never end and that's how people can really have fun. The Plexiglas also surrounds the sound, so you can actually hear what the other team is saying and it's extremely social way of getting to know one another. And then we have a video of one minute.
$69 U.S. Special Forces Device Turns Men Into Beasts. This Marine Corps officer is bringing military tech.
Padell is very similar to tennis. All courts are standardized roughly 33 by 66 feet, so about a third the size of a tennis court. And it's the same scoring as tennis, but I would say 99% of the play is doubles play. You start with an underhand serve. After you serve, the ball has to bounce onto the turf and you can play off the walls and play off the side. If tennis is checkered, Padell is chess. It's really a thinking person's sport, but the great thing about Padell, it is easy to learn and hard to master. That means that people from various levels can go out and play and have fun right away, but it's hard to master. Padell has played in 78 different countries around the world, 30,000 courts around the world, 35 different international federations.
Get Padell certified today. Learn more at USPTA.com.
Is your teaching pro?
You don't touch it before it goes over the net.
Yeah, so as you can see, it's a lot of fun and that's, that's the thing. It's just great.
That's why it's Padell, not paddle.
Padell.
Yeah, so what is our club's vision? It's really, it's not to be on the professional side of the sport, it's to be on the community side of the sport. It's easy to come and try. We want to work with the city, schools, organizations nearby, locally, and offer our programming, coaching, amateur leagues. We're really open to all partnership opportunities. This is a great thing for schools to get involved, the city programming getting, get involved, and we're just, we're starting with programming for all levels, for beginners, intermediate, advanced. And we do have other clubs coming up. The second one, LA County, a fairly bigger site, and we have two, three that we're currently looking for here in San Diego, but they're not being built yet. From our team, James, maybe you can introduce Will, he's your good friend.
Will also played college tennis with me in Kansas and we just have a love and passion for racket sports and him and I are both real estate professionals now as well and we all got together to join this Padell project.
And this is the rendering and the landscaping of the club. So as you can see, it's gonna have a lot of green areas and plantation and seating around the courts. So it's gonna be nice for anyone to really walk in, just, I think this is gonna be a great attraction in the city. Anyone from the beach can just walk by and come have a look. There's a lot of tourists in the hotels that we are fairly confident that we already know that they're interested in partnering up with us. So it's just gonna look amazing and hopefully we can convert this old parking lot, this club. We do have a wheelchair access from the courts to the office and to the restroom.
I know some of you guys have sound concerns working with the planning, planning department and building. As you can see, that yellow area is going to be extra soundproofing. All of the yellow areas are going to be a meshed fence and we've got our ideas from Point Setia Park, which is a very popular pickleball facility. And pickleball is a lot louder than Padell because we have the glass walls encapsulate the sound. So just in case that some of the sound does sneak out, we're going to have the same sound barrier that Point Setia Park has as well for our material.
Yeah, and we actually did conduct an internal study behind the parking on the alley and we did conduct that the South Coast Highway noises were louder than the paddle tennis playing noises. So this is just an extreme method of really trying to be considerate in terms of the sound. Yeah, this is another site in LA that we're opening and that will actually also have pickleball over there. But our whole concept of the club is to have a lot of green areas and have that beachy California lifestyle, active lifestyle concept.
Again, our main focus is to really bring active lifestyle community, partner with the cities to bring in after-school programs and just really turn this unsightly auto dealership into something that the city's proud of, that people can drive by and want to be interested to try out this new sport.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. A couple, I'll call one question if you know I might steal your question about your hours of operation, every day of the week? We know the hours, but you're open every day?
Every day of the week, yes.
And will it be staffed the entire time?
Most of our primary hours will be staffed. We will be using an online registration and payments and there's gonna be secure locks to the courts, so without the reservation, you can't just go in and play. It's gonna be surveilled and staffed, but probably not in every single minute.
My only concerns would be off-hours for people being able to rent your equipment or in issues, because it is, it is a sport. People do get competitive, people sometimes get heated, there's no one to kind of referee that, you know, to try to calm, calm things down if there's, if there's no staffing. So those are kind of my concerns.
Yeah, it's, I feel like it's much like, just like pickleball and a lot of these public facilities, you know, we don't, there's not, you know, many security guards there to make sure that there's no fights that break out with the pickleball. But for court rentals, that is, that is a good point. We plan to have an automated system to be able to also rent the equipment on the off-hours where a code, they can unlock the box and they can get the equipment as well.
Yeah, there are providers in the, a lot of the European paddle facilities are actually independently operating if the court amount is less than six. So there we do have these containers with a lock system which works similar to the reservation with your court and they will have a code which can then open the container and get your rented gear. But we're always gonna be available by phone or email and we can, we can come to the site and meet new players and that's, that's our whole goal here, is to really engage all the community.
And my last question for as far as sound, you mentioned that you did a noise level testing from the back area for the neighborhood. Do you have those numbers available? The reason I ask is mainly because you established baseline here before anything is built. It'd be nice to have that baseline as well for the community. So because, I mean, you're already far enough from the streets, so there's already going to be some noise suppression and you're also gonna have obstacles that are going to suppress some of that noise as well as with the sound barriers. But it would be nice to have that baseline that would give the community some comfort in knowing, okay, this is where we were, you know, before, this is what we are, this is where we are after.
Yeah, I do believe, Dane, you might have that. I think we have at least conducted a study.
So we could, we can definitely give you the baseline of what it was from behind without anything there and then that's, that's a good point. We can, we can show based on what it's at now after the construction is done, we have that for the community.
Okay, thank you.
I think after, after that test, the planning staff recommended that nevertheless we would be considerate and build the sound barriers on top of the Plexiglas and we took advice from that.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Balma.
Yeah, I just want to kind of know a little bit more detail about this sport. I might want to try it. What's the, what's the plain surface made out of? You said it was a turf.
Yeah, I'll tell you, my knees are thrashed from playing tennis and pickleball. Now I'm playing professional pickleball and it's so nice to play on the Padell courts because it's, it's sand, there's sand that's, that's laid on top of the artificial grass, a small layer of artificial grass. So it's actually quite comfortable. That's why you see these guys jumping around.
Yeah.
And flying on the, you would never do that on a pickle or tennis court, but they're doing it here because you can land and you're not gonna get scraped up. So it's, it's good for the body of all ages and also I know you looked at the professional, it's, when you see the professionals playing like, wow, they're running outside the field.
Yeah.
At the lower levels, I mean, the walls sometimes aren't even used. You might be just hitting bollies back and forth and then maybe one hard shot you would use off the wall, but mostly it's gonna be fun out in front of you and much like pickleball.
Right. Which pickleball, I don't think I've ever been in a pickleball situation when there's been fights. I think it's kind of the same idea. It's not like tennis. The other thing I was gonna say was like, as far as sound goes, having that kind of a plain surface is gonna be an absorption of sound, a lot better than a pickleball or a tennis court. So that's another good thing that would be for sound. The other thing I was gonna ask was, what's the cost? Is it gonna be like, is it different times, it costs, like, so like maybe if you want to play in the morning, it's gonna cost more if you want to play at, you know, I don't know, late at night, something like that?
Early mornings before work and then prime time hours, 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. and from 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. And then during the days, we plan to work with schools, after-school programs and local projects that might feel, this is something new that they want to try out. And the prize is gonna be roughly $15 per person for playing time, which is typically 60 to 90 minutes.
Sounds good.
It's extremely affordable.
That's, that's good. And the other thing is like I noticed on the professional tape you gave us, there's just one of the tips here, when the guy hits it really hard to his opponent and it goes off the wall and it doesn't, and the guy can't touch it, it goes back over the net and obviously the guy wins a point, right? Because if he goes past the whole, yes, I kind of noticed that, like I'm gonna try that.
Yes, the whole trick in paddle is that the harder you hit, the worse it is. If you have someone aggressive and they wanna tackle the ball, it will, it will definitely come back to you.
That's cool.
So that's the beauty of this wall.
One last surface question. The glass, is it actual glass or is it Plexi or is it tempered? It's gotta be tempered glass if it's glass. I mean, what, is it just glass thick?
Yeah, it's a tempered glass.
Tempered glass.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Does it have a coating on it to help it make it less ability to?
Yeah, it's a bouncy, so you can even bend glass and it won't.
Okay, so it's pretty, got some kind of a?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That was great. Sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. Commissioner Dodds and then Commissioner Anthony.
Just one more question. I know in the staff report it said that you don't plan to have tournaments. Is that still going to, so there won't be tournaments, it's just all recreational?
Yeah, for this, for this site, it's gonna be hard. It's only two courts, so it's kind of hard to run a, you know, a tournament. There's gonna be a lot of people waiting around. They might be there all night to get on. Yeah, we're waiting to have larger facilities so that more people can get playing time and obviously the parking. And obviously, the parking, we want to make sure there's enough parking for those kind of events and that's, we're kind of limited with the site, so.
Commissioner Anthony?
Yeah, this seems exciting. I don't think my knees will take it anyway, but. So one of the questions I have, and I, looking at your dimensions here, is the, the height of the court, the, the glass, of course, and then you have, what above that? What do you have above that, netting?
Yeah, so, yeah, we'll, we'll bring it up to the, the screen as well. Based on the recommendations of, of, of planning and building, they wanted to make sure that we didn't have balls flying over into coast highway or even into the back houses. And so we were actually, we customized and made sure we have nets well above the normal playing area of the, of the glass. And that would just ensure not only are we, are we meshing it with the sound, a sound barrier, but we'll also be able to, they'll, they'll be used to catch the balls and keep them back in play.
Okay, that was my concern, was it bouncing over on the coast highway, I mean. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. We'll come back, I'll have you come back if there are any other questions, but we're going to open up to the public for any comments at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Any, my screen should show if I have any speakers.
Chair Rizales, we do not have any speakers for this item.
Okay. Doesn't mean you can't come forward if you'd like to provide some commentary or ask a question for the applicant or staff. Okay, nobody coming forward, so we'll close the public hearing. Exciting, I think. Another outdoor opportunity for the city and the community, so I'm going to give it a shot when it opens. Commissioner Obama?
Well, I am excited to, whoops. I'm excited too, and I wanted, and if there's no other discussion between us fellow commissioners, I would like to make a motion that we confirm issuance of Class 32 Category exemption for the California Environmental Quality Act and Section 19, Section 15332. And the, you know, these numbers always get me. Maybe we should just make it more simple, anyway. And also adopt the Planning Commission Resolution approving development plan, conditional use permits, regular coastal permit for the construction and operation of two Padell tennis court, oh, it's tennis courts, that seems weird, Padell courts. I mean, is it, okay, anyway, love it and wish you guys the best and I want to see more of it. It's awesome.
Thank you. So we have a motion. Commissioner Obama made a motion to approve project as proposed by staff.
I'll second.
And we have a second by Commissioner Dodd. So let's go ahead and vote.
Let the motion show that, or let the record show that the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Good luck, gentlemen. Okay, we'll go to our next item, which is Item 5, Consideration of a Development Plan and a Conditional Use Permit to Allow Construction of Four Buildings, Including Three Dorms, a Kitchen, Dining Hall, Laundry Facilities, and Other Amenities Located at 5780 Mission Road. The applicant is West Coast Tomato Growers. I will start with disclosures. Familiar with the site, driven by many times, read the staff report and then saw, I believe, at least one email on this item. Vice Chair Morsi?
The same, thank you.
Commissioner Anthony?
Read the report and very familiar with the site.
Commissioner Malick?
Read the report, very familiar with the site.
Commissioner Simons?
Read the report.
Commissioner Obama?
Read the report and very familiar with the site.
Thank you. And Commissioner Dodd's?
Read the report and very familiar with the site.
Thank you. Good evening, Shannon.
Good evening, Chair Rizales, Planning Commissioners, Shannon Vitale, Senior Planner in the Development Services Department. I'm here this evening to discuss Agenda Item Number 5, A Proposed Farmworker Housing Project for the West Coast Tomato Growers. The West Coast Tomato Growers currently cultivate 580 acres of crops, including tomato and Brussels sprouts. To assist in the farming operations, seasonal farmworkers are brought up from central Mexico during the growing and harvesting season, which typically runs from March through November of each year. For the past 10 years, West Coast Tomato Growers has leased housing for the farmworkers at a nearby site at North River Road. However, this housing is no longer available and they have decided to pursue onsite housing for their farmworkers. The project site, which is outlined in red on this slide, encompasses approximately four acres of the West Coast Tomato Growers Agricultural Packing Plant. Access to the site is provided via seingway. The site is disturbed land due to prior agricultural operations that date back to the 1960s. Most recently, the site has been used for equipment and vehicle storage associated with the West Coast Tomato Growers. Surrounding land uses include the San Luis Rey River Mitigation Bank and the San Luis Rey River to the north, vacant land to the east, State Route 76 to the south, and the Agricultural Packing Facility to the west. The proposed project includes a development plan and a conditional use permit to allow the construction and operation of the farmworker housing project. The development plan is to allow the construction of four buildings, including three dorms, a kitchen, dining hall, laundry facilities, and office space totaling 29,597 square feet. There will also be onsite amenities, including a soccer field and basketball court. 22 parking spaces are provided onsite for visitors and employees. A biofiltration basin is proposed to the northwest of the site. The three dorms are located on the east of the site and the building on the west is a single-story building for the kitchen, dining hall, and outdoor eating areas. The conditional use permit is to allow the operation of the 338-bed farmworker housing project. Pursuant to the zoning ordinance, a CUP is required for any farmworker housing project exceeding 36 beds. The seasonal farmworkers would be transported to the project site from central Mexico and daily transportation to the growing fields would be provided by bus. The two images here show the proposed floor, floor plans. The image on the left is an example of the male dorms. Those are in Buildings 1 and 3. Each floor would have, each building would have 144 beds. The third dormitory is available for the female workers and provides 50 beds. As described in the staff report, each dorm is divided into rooms with eight to 10 bunk beds per room and communal bathroom facilities. Each dorm would meet the state and federal requirements for safe and sanitary housing as prescribed by the State of California and the United States Department of Labor. Each of the buildings would be prefabricated modular units. As shown in these renderings, the building materials include white finish steel siding, metal trim, and gray shingle roof. The two-story buildings would extend to a maximum height of 23 feet or inches. There is also landscaping proposed, including new canopy trees along the project perimeter. As can be seen in the image on the left of this slide, the project site is primarily disturbed land. There is approximately 0.06 acres of Diegan Coastal Sage scrub and 0.04 acres of coastal scrub that would be impacted by the project. The applicant has agreed to mitigate those impacts at a two-to-one ratio in accordance with direction received from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. Due to the proximity to the San Luis Rey River, the project is proposing a 100-foot habitat buffer and an additional 30-foot fuel modification buffer. I would like to note that the applicant did increase the habitat buffer from 70 feet to 100 feet in response to comments received from the wildlife agencies. The updated site plan is shown on the right. And again, it shows 100-foot buffer from habitat and an additional 30-foot fuel modification As described in the staff report, staff reviewed the project for compliance with the general plan and the zoning ordinance. The project is consistent with the goals and policies of both the land use element and the housing element. The project is compatible with the existing agricultural land use because it provides needed housing to support agricultural operations and ensure the economic viability of farming in the region. Additionally, the current housing element has a policy to encourage a production of a variety of housing types in Oceanside, including farmworker housing. By providing housing for up to 338 farmworkers, this project satisfies the housing element goal for providing this housing. Since the project is located in the agricultural district, it was reviewed for compliance with agricultural development standards. As detailed in Table 2 of the staff report, the project meets or exceeds all applicable development standards. The farmworker housing project is allowed in the agricultural district with projects exceeding 36 beds, subject to the approval of a use permit. The project was also reviewed for compliance with the Climate Action Plan Ordinance and as proposed, meets or exceeds all applicable requirements. In accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, an initial study environmental checklist was prepared for the project. Based on the initial study, the project could have a potentially significant impact unless mitigated to the following areas: biological and cultural resources, geology, land use, and tribal cultural resources. A mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the project that states that if the mitigation measures identified in the mitigation monitoring and reporting program are implemented, there would not be a significant adverse impact to the environment. The draft M&amp;D was circulated for a 30-day public review on January 23rd. Seven, seven comment letters were received during this public review period and were included in the documents provided. All public comments related to the M&amp;D were included as the attachment as well as responses to those comments. Pursuant to AB 52, staff initiated tribal consultation and met with one tribal group. Their comments have been incorporated into the initial study and the tribal cultural resources mitigation measures. The project has been conditioned to comply with all mitigation measures listed in the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. With implementation of these measures, there should be no adverse impact to the environment. The project complied with the city's enhanced notification program. There was a notice of application sign placed on the property. A notice was mailed out to all property owners within a 1,500-foot radius and all tenants within a 100-foot radius of the project site. Additionally, in November, the applicant held a community outreach meeting that was attended by 12 community members. A summary of those, of the comments received at that meeting is included in the community outreach report attached to the staff report. In addition to the public comments received during the public review of the environmental document, staff has received one additional comment letter expressing support for the project, and that was forwarded to you earlier today. Staff finds that the project is consistent with the general plan and the zoning ordinance and therefore is recommending the Planning Commission adopt the mitigated negative declaration and associated mitigation monitoring and reporting program by adopting Planning Commission Resolution Number 2023-P14 and also adopt Planning Commission Resolution Number 2023-P16 approving the development plan and the conditional use permit. That concludes my presentation. We have the applicant team here as well. They're not going to provide a presentation, but they are available for any questions you may have. And I'm also available for questions.
Great, thank you, Shannon. I had one question. One of your slides touched on the housing element. And underneath that, it had, yeah, farmworker housing. Is that a subset of the housing element or is it all kind of captured within the housing element?
Sure, Chair Rizales, Planning Commissioners. So in the current housing element, there is a specific policy. I can provide that too, just a second. It's, I'm sorry, it's Goal 2 of the housing element and then sub, sub-goal, it's Policy 2.2 within the housing element. And it reads, "The city shall encourage both the private and public sectors to produce or assist in the production of housing with a particular emphasis on housing, affordable and accessible housing, to lower-income households, persons with disabilities, elderly, large families, female, female-headed households, farmworking, and homeless persons." So it's a specific policy within the housing element.
Great, thank you. Yeah, interesting. Any questions for Shannon? Go ahead, Commissioner Dodd's?
In, in the report, it's, it shows that the, the laundry mat and the store, or the laundry and the storage area is all in the women's facility, the women's building on the first floor, is that correct?
Commissioner Dodd's, Planning Commissioners, let me pull up the site plan, but I believe that is correct. Yes, so Building 2, it's labeled as Building 2 on the site plan. So the first floor would have laundry, office storage space, and then, and also some beds. And then the second floor would have the remaining beds. There will be a total of 50 beds available.
Okay. Is, since that, that laundry area is communal, so both male and female will have access, is there any type of security for especially the, the beddings on the first floor to minimize, to, to, to keep away as far as access for just the women that are, that are living there?
Commissioner Dodd's, Planning Commissioners, I'll defer to the applicant to answer that question because it regards the operation.
Okay. The other question I have is about storage. Is that storage area for them, for their personal effects?
Commissioner Dodd's, Commissioners, I will also defer that to the applicant.
Okay.
Thank you, Shannon. I think that's all we have for right now. Applicant, would you mind coming forward? I know we have at least one question. Before you tackle that one, I had a question about funding for this project. Is there special funding grants, federal assistance that comes along when you want to do a project like this?
Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Terry Plowden. I am a land use consultant for the applicant. As far as the funding, no, this is all privately funded.
Wow, that's terrific. Commissioner Dodd, you want to repeat your question?
Yes, the, the first question I had was from, from the securities perspective where you have Building 2, which is for the females. You have the laundry area and the storage area both located on the first floor, but you also have bedding there. Is there a limited access or security access on the first floor and for second floor as well?
We, as a requirement of our conditional use permit, have to prepare what's called a security and management plan. It has not been completed yet, but we would certainly, to address your concern, we could put in a provision to that effect.
Okay. And the second question I had is that storage area, is that for the farmworkers' personal effects?
No, that's more for janitorial supplies and there's also a sundries store in, in the kitchen area where they may also supply, you know, drinks and things like that, they supply. It's all, it's all non-alcoholic, of course.
So where do the farmers, where do they hold their personal effects?
They, they have small lockers in the dorms.
Commissioner Morsi, go ahead.
Do you know where the modular units are coming from?
I, we, we have had some preliminary discussions with a fabricator in Spring Valley.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other questions at the moment, but we may call you up if there are others. Thank you. Any slips for this item?
No, we don't have any slips for this item.
Okay, thank you. Please come forward, those in the audience, if you'd like to speak to this item before we close the public hearing. Okay, we'll close the public hearing on this item. My impression was when I was reading through this, and thank you for answering the question about the funding, was it seems like a very needed project if you're operating what's a fairly sizable agricultural activity. So kudos to the applicant for, you know, recognizing the need and then stepping up to fund what looks like to be a really good project for those workers that have been helping out your business. So appreciate that from, from my perspective, that, that you're doing that. It certainly has my support because, again, it seems like it's very needed. Commissioner Obama?
I guess you took the words right out of my mouth because I, I live in South More Hills and I overlook the Westpac tomato-growing fields and I'm so happy and so, you know, impressed with what you guys are doing and support you guys a million percent. And we want to see farmers continue to farm in South More Hills and you guys have definitely stepped up to the plate and are going to do it. So we are, I'm, I'm 100 million percent behind you guys, so, yeah.
Definitely. Anybody else?
Make a motion.
Yeah. Vice Chair Morsi, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion if, I'd like to agree with staff and recommend that we adopt a mitigated negative declaration and associated mitigation monitoring and report, reporting program by adopting Planning Commission Resolution 2023-P14 and 2, approved development plan D-225 and CUP 225 by adopting Planning Commission Resolution Number 2023-P16 with findings and conditions of, of approval attached herein for the development and operation of a farmworker housing project that's much needed and I'm sure the farmers, great job.
I'll, I'll second. Great, thank you. So we have a, a motion by Vice Chair Morsi to approve and a second by Commissioner Malick. So again, thank you for bringing this forward. I think we all are very much in support of it, but let's go ahead and vote.
Let the record show that the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you all, good luck. Thank you all, good luck. Okay, our last item this evening under public hearings is consideration of, Item 6, consideration of a tentative tract plan, development plan, and density bonus involving a new single-family residence, several of them actually, referred to as the Vista Way Senior Housing at 3710 Vista Way. The applicant is Reza Shera, excuse me if I butchered your name. My disclosures are, staff report, very familiar with the location, lived not too far from there. So, staff report driven by many, many times, and I believe we all received a couple of emails on this item this afternoon, so, Vice Chair Morrissey?
Staff report, reviewed the drawings, and familiar with the site.
Thank you. Commissioner Dodds?
Staff report, and very familiar with the site.
Commissioner Obama?
Staff report, familiar with the site, and I did receive the emails.
Thank you. Commissioner Simons?
Staff report, and familiar with the site.
Commissioner Malik?
Staff report, familiar with the site, and did a drive-by just to get a current look at it.
Great, and Commissioner Anthony?
Staff report, familiar with the site, and also did a drive-by.
Thank you. Go ahead, Sergio.
Thank you, Chair Rosales, members of the planning commission. My name is Sergio Verder. I'm the city planner and the project manager for the Vista Way Senior Housing Project. Tonight, just to give you some background, the project site's 1.97 acres in area. It's located on the north side of Vista Way between Buena Hills Drive and Northway. Surrounded land uses include age-restricted attached single-family homes to the north and west, a multifamily development to the east, and Vista Way and State Road 78 to the south as depicted on the graphic on the overhead projector here. By way of background, in 1995, the city acquired, well, let me back up a little bit. The site was previously developed with 20 attached single-family homes as depicted on the graphic here. The project site's outlined in red, a small little cul-de-sac there. In 1995, the city acquired the property for the purposes of widening Vista Way. Here, you could see this aerials from 1996. You could see that the homes were razed, but the foundations remained. And finally, in 1998, you could see the new fresh pavement and the realigned portion of Vista Way where they took the curve out of the road, and the site's completely vacant at this point. In February 2003, the project site was declared surplus property by the city. There were no takers at the time for developing at the site. And in 2018, the city received an unsolicited offer to purchase the property from the applicant, and in February of 2019, the city council approved the purchase and sale agreement with the applicant for the purposes of developing age-restricted single-family homes. Tonight, you're being asked to consider a tentative map to create a subdivision for condominium purposes, also being asked to consider a development plan as this project entails a residential project of more than three housing units, also serves as the site design and design review for the project. And finally, a density bonus application is being requested. It's not for necessarily increased density, rather, it's for waivers of development standards that would otherwise physically preclude the development at the density proposed. The applicant is proposing to set aside 15% of the project units for low-income households, which equates to three units. It should be noted as, because the project, the property was declared surplus land by the city, it's subject to the requirements of the Surplus Land Act, which also requires that 15% of the project units be set aside for lower-income households. So, between the density, the way the density bonus project, or density bonus application is being pursued satisfies that Surplus Land Act requirement. So, the site plan is depicted here on this graphic. It's a purpose of, is to create suitable pads and private open space in the form of a backyard. So, there's going to be a retaining wall developed along the perimeter of the site. There's currently a manufactured slope that comes out to about this area of the property. And so, the manufactured slope is being pushed back, and there's going to be a retaining wall that reaches a maximum of 15 feet in height along the perimeter of the property as being proposed. You could see that the, there's a private drive being proposed that's accessed off the Vista Way. It leads to this kind of turnaround area and another drive that kind of accesses the two triplexes that are being proposed part of the project. And also, there's some additional parking here in the corner with one turnaround space of car comes in here, has to turn around and back up, will out of the project site. There are two floor plans being proposed. Unit Type A is 1,031 square feet, consists of two bedrooms, two baths, and one-car garage. Unit Type B is 1,041 square feet in area, also consists of two bedrooms, two baths, with one-car garage. Here are some elevations for reference purposes. You can see that the building height, it's hard to read on this graphic, but the maximum building height of these proposed homes are just over 13 feet in height, so very low-scale and consistent with development and the prominent development in the area. It's a modern architecture styles proposed with simple lines and useful materials with varied textures and colors and design elements like exposed scuppers and plentiful windows to create ample natural light within the units. Again, the proposed homes only reach a maximum of just over 13 feet in height. Here's a colored elevation of the unit Type A, and there's two options being proposed for each one. You can see the different use of roof lines and architectural materials to create some variety and visual interest in the project. And here's some colored elevation depiction of unit Type B. Again, two design styles, some varied roof lines, and again, different use of colors and materials to create some visual interest. Here are renderings of units 13 to 15, the first triplex, the westerly triplex that's being proposed. Here's renderings of units 16 through 18 to give you an idea of what it's looked like. Landscape plan's been designed in compliance with all city code requirements. It meets the requirement for tree canopy and permeable surfaces. With respect to density bonus, the project site has, is within the medium-density residential A land use category, which allows up to 9.9 dwelling units per acre. So, the base density for this site would be 20 units with respect to the density bonus. 15% set aside affords them the ability to increase the density by 27.5%. So, overall, the site could accommodate 26 units pursuant to density bonus. However, the applicant's not proposing to go beyond the density range of the medium-density residential A land use category, and the effective density is 9.14 units per acre. With respect to density bonus, because of the 15% set aside, they are entitled to one incentive or concession, but the applicant has chosen not to utilize that incentive or concession. And again, as a reminder, waivers of development standards that would physically preclude the development at the density proposed are unlimited. So, in this case, the applicant is asking for five different waivers with respect to the number of garage spaces being provided, retaining wall height, setbacks both in the front and rear yards, the depth of the rear yards, and the amount of common usable open space. As outlined in the staff report, though the applicant's not proposing code-compliant parking with respect to the number of garage spaces, the project does comply with all parking requirements of the underlying zoning code. Each unit will be afforded two parking spaces, one within an enclosed garage and the other within a nearby surface parking space that will be assigned to each unit. There's also six guest parking spaces being provided within the project site. Staff analyzed the project with respect to the general plan and zoning ordinance and find that it's consistent with both. It's consistent with land use element and housing element policies. It also provides affordable housing in close proximity to commercial uses and public services. And as outlined in the staff report, the project complies with all the development standards of our may zone with the exception of those development standards that are being waived, or which waivers are being requested. With that, staff recommends that the planning commission confirm Class 32 infill exemption and approve the project by adoption of Resolution 23-P17. We did receive one of his correspondence today that was forwarded to the planning commission. It's the only letter that we received, and it wasn't necessarily in opposition or in favor of the project, rather, it outlined some concerns. Those concerns included how the density was calculated, the height of the proposed buildings, architectural compatibility of the proposed buildings with surrounding uses, and safety of the proposed driveway. Real briefly, the email states that the density should have been calculated by omitting the portions of the project site that are being dedicated to the internal driveways. That's incorrect. In our city, the density's calculation is calculated using, utilizing the gross site area. So, all 1.97 acres are included in that density calculation. The letter also stated that the building heights were over 31 feet in height. That's not correct. The buildings are just over 13 feet in height. The architectural compatibility, the city doesn't have any specific guidelines with respect to architecture and architectural compatibility. They are proposing a modern design, which is a little take from what's around there, but quite frankly, the designs, the architectural theme around there is not so remarkable. So, this fits right in with the city and the proposed development. And finally, you know, what I can say, speak to with respect to the safety of the driveway is that this project was reviewed by both the Transportation Engineering Division and the Fire Department of both divisions, both disciplines approved the project. So, that concludes our staff report. I'm available for any questions. The applicant is here with their engineer. I don't believe they have a presentation for you tonight, but they are available for any questions that the planning commission might have.
Thanks, Sergio. I'm going to go to what you just finished with, and that is the traffic engineering evaluation. So, that driveway does not have a signal in any respect, right? And so, I presume no restriction for those leaving their private driveway for turning left on Vista Way, and now they're going east. That seems like a kind of a dicey move there, but can you elaborate maybe on that evaluation by the traffic engineer?
As much as I collaborate is that they reviewed the project and the design as proposed and approved it. It meets all the criteria of the city's engineering design manual with respect to residential driveways and clear sight distances. There is no restrictions, turning movement restrictions in or out of the project site as proposed.
Okay. Commissioner Malik?
Thanks. Good evening, Sergio. Couple of questions, one related to what the chairman just said, but can you tell us what senior housing actually means?
Sure. So, what the connotation of senior housing is that only folks 55 and up could live there. The predominant development area, so the site was previously developed with age-restricted housing. The project known as Costa Serena is age-restricted housing, 55 and up. So, this site is also required to be an age-restricted housing development.
On a personal note, I would say, when I was 40, I would say 55 was senior housing. When I'm 60, I don't think so, but anyway.
I'm getting close to myself.
That being said, a couple of things. Back to the point made earlier about the entry and exit going east and west on Vista Way, there is no signal, correct?
There is no signal. There is a signal at Northway.
I'm familiar with it either way. I just, unplanned. Is there a turn lane going east or west, rather, to go into the property, or no turn lane either?
I'm not familiar, I'm not intimately familiar with the engineering aspect of it. I don't believe there's a turn lane designed, a deceleration lane designed to go into the project site.
And the elevation above Vista Way of units 1, 2, and 3, are they well above the roadway? It's kind of a gradual slope up, but I'm curious, I couldn't really fully discern it from the drawings where, what the elevation was. In other words, how far above the road surface are we looking so that we're, you know, from a safety perspective and from a fairly fast-moving highway?
As depicted in the civil plans prepared for the project, there is a retaining wall along the Vista Way right-of-way frontage that's about four feet tall. So, that's about four feet in elevation difference between the project site and the pads where those homes will be built.
Great. I guess the only concern I would have, given this is quote-unquote senior housing, is that the, that is a fairly decent speed of traffic rolling on that. There are, you're kind of bracketed by two stoplights, but without some specific traffic control measure to go into that. And that would be difficult as well because it's not a very big, long distance between where that entrance is going to be and where the next traffic light is. So, it's just a very, in my opinion, challenging ingress and egress for the residents and for other motorists that are traveling on that. I would ask that we maybe take another look at that as a result of fully seeing the project developed. I understand that the traffic engineers have taken a look at it. I think this comes to us in kind of its more mature form, and understanding that kind of seems to be a general concern. That's all I have.
So, I could, Commissioner Malik, I could expand a bit, a little bit. There was some talk early on when this project first came in about signalizing the project driveway, but it is too close to the Northway driveway. In addition, the volume of trips coming in and out of the project site just don't warrant a signalized intersection, a signal there. It's very limited, 18 homes. I'm not exactly familiar with the trip generation for age-restricted homes, but it's less than like that for a single family. So, a single-family home, as an example, is 10 trips a day. So, we're talking about 180 trips here, with 10% of those being in the AMP hour and 10% of those being the PMP hour. So, it's very low trip generation with respect to project traffic in and out of that driveway.
Along those lines, if this project gets approved and gets constructed, another trigger for whether it gets signalized, unfortunately, may be that over time, if there were a lot of accidents attributed to the exiting and entrance, entering the development, it becomes a safety issue that would trigger a review by the traffic engineer. Is that right?
Certainly. Chair Rosales, the city traffic engineer and city traffic engineering department monitors accidents and intersections for safety. And so, presumably, if unsafe condition was created by this, over time, if unsafe condition was identified at this intersection, certainly, there would be measures taken to address those. The idea is that there's such low volume of traffic in and out of there that it wouldn't warrant that, but that's certainly something that the city traffic engineering division monitors.
Right, okay. Any other questions for Sergio? Thanks, Sergio. Any questions for the applicant? They do not have a presentation, but if anybody'd like to, to you have a question? Okay, we'll let that go, and we'll turn to the public.
We do have one speaker tonight, Chair Rosales. It'll be Christopher Nodine. Would you come forward? You'll have three minutes to speak.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the planning commission. My name is Christopher Nodine. I live on Buena Hills Drive. I've lived with that residence for 13 years now. I've lived in San Diego County for eight years now. I'm retired military, and I'm an engineering manager in my current trade. Listened to a lot of the discussion. I will admit, I am not a city planner. I came up with a lot of discussion here. I did do some of the research on this, and I've researched a lot of the area. This entire area is built on fill, just so everybody knows. I've done research on the area back to the late 1800s, and there was a road through here. So, every residence in this area, including my own, is built on fill. That's one of the reasons that I brought to the attention. The retaining wall is being proposed to hold back the houses. Much of the slope right now goes right into the middle where these houses were built from where the current houses are up on the hill. It's a little bit misrepresented in the drawings there, but all the houses would be above the sightline of these houses in the actual drawing from where this is. The road is directly level with the land which these houses were being built on. That's one of my traffic concerns. A retaining wall will not be crash-worthy. As a matter of fact, Saturday, I witnessed a major accident directly adjacent to where the road would be exiting onto this road. This is with the constant traffic here. I'd also, along those lines, I'd like to offer a little bit of celebration that State Route 78 is now open. Should reduce that, but that also increases the speed on the road going Vista Way in that vicinity. There are routine accidents. I have personally witnessed no less than half a dozen accidents the time that I've lived there at the Buena Hills exit. It is a major concern. There is less than an eighth of a mile there between the two traffic signals that we have. There is no turnout. I drove the route this morning, at least in one mile, which is what I drove in each direction. There is no instances of a turnout to a drive that can turn both directions without a blocked midlane or a turnout lane. There are no instances of that. Additionally, immediately adjacent to the road that's being proposed, there is a road that is terminated dead-end there because it was not allowed to terminate on the Buena Hills, on the Vista Way because of the traffic safety issue. So, it is a major concern. There are a lot of traffic issues in this area. There is a lot of transportation via fire truck, ambulance, and everything else in this area. So, I realize my three minutes is up. I acknowledge that the rest of my comments are provided via email. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nodine. Any other slips? Any other slips or any?
That concludes our speakers, Chair Rosales.
Anybody else like to come forward before we close it out? Okay, thank you. Sergio, I'm going to go there once again. So traffic. I'm trying to remember, I drive Vista Way all the time. Is there a center, so there's the two lanes going east and west, is there a center lane that where you could conceivably make a turn left if you're going east into the property or if you're coming out, you can, you can stage in there and then enter the flow? Yeah, I was going to get on my phone too and look, but if you, if you have that, because minus that, I don't see how this works.
So Chair Rosales, I'm not familiar enough with this area to know how it's striped currently, but I'm pulling up an area right now to kind of take a look at it to perhaps best answer your question. So it looks like there's a scramble lane. It's like a center lane where you can either make a right or left turning movement, a painted scramble lane in the center there between the two signals. When you approach Northway, there's a left turn pocket that goes in, that turns left on Northway. So to your point, to the point being asked, there is probably a 12-foot wide painted median within Vista Way along the project frontage.
That'll become the turn lane if you're going east into the project.
That's correct.
Okay.
If I had looked at the, I don't think we have a striping plan as part of this. We do have the civil engineer who designed the project who maybe could address that question.
I'm sorry, yes, sir, if you want to come forward to the mic, because I think this is our concern, is if it's going to be safe exiting and entering that property and you're going to need to make us feel like it's a safe operation.
My name's Neil Benhoff. We're Valley Consultants. There will, as part of this project, a striping plan is required as far as conditions go. The actual entrance there is, there will be a left-hand turn coming off there through striping, but it will be also, exit will only be right-hand. That was part of the, that was requirement that was put into the conditions there. So you can only exit the property to the right and enter both right and left, but the exit so that, because of the problem of crossing traffic in that area.
Okay.
So it makes it much safer in that way because the only real dangerous exit would be the exit left out of the property where, because you'd also have people possibly coming in off of Vista Way from traveling east.
Yeah, and just down the street in a property development called Rose Dale, there's, it's a large condominium townhouse development. I'm trying to remember why, but I was on the commission at that point, there was an exit out of their center property with a stop sign that said right turn only for the same reason, so that people exiting wouldn't go left. They do all the time. I see them constantly turning left. So it's, yeah, it becomes an enforcement issue.
Right. This is, on this particular one, the striping in center divide has been, described it, but it's a specific type of striping that would help prohibit that. It's a more closed striping in that area. So that is what's been proposed to also not just the right turn only sign, it's also a striping within the road itself.
Yeah. I'm not a traffic engineer, but I, if we really think want to force them to turn right and make it almost impossible to turn left, I think there's a way to develop the curb as they exit that forces the curb basically turns. And so if they were to go left, they'd almost run over the curb. So a suggestion as this is developed that, and if we approve it, that an extreme attempt is made to make sure they go right only.
What you're talking about would be adding basically a small to the center of the site, the exit point there, so it would force people to go to the only turn right.
Yeah. That's my suggestion.
Chair Rosales, I believe the only concern with that would be ingress and egress for public safety vehicles and garbage trucks. That might be, not be practical, but certainly something we can ask those disciplines to look at and provide guidance. Since they didn't condition the project to have such a raised, a physical barrier to kind of force that turning movement, I think we have to live with sort of the signage and striping that's being proposed rather than a raised physical barrier, because the last thing we want to do is impede access for public safety vehicles and garbage trucks.
Okay. Any other, thank you, sir. I think we're good with the traffic discussion. Any other concerns or questions, commissioners? Don't see anything, okay. Anybody like to make a motion? Is everybody comfortable with this project as proposed?
Yes, speakers.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't think I closed the public hearing. Okay. Sorry, sir, come forward. Give us your name, please, bring the mic down if you need to.
My name's Randy Stotland. I've been living at 3305 Buena Hills Drive for about 10 years now. And so I drive that Vista Way there frequently. And if you've driven there, you know how fast those cars are going there. It's a major traffic hazard. People coming east on Vista Way, they get frustrated because they want to turn around. There's no place to turn around, so they make U-turns where they're not supposed to do it. They turn left onto Buena Hills Drive and make a U-turn in that little roadway there. And there's all kinds of traffic problems there. And those cars are going very quickly. When you're coming down Buena Hills West and, or down Vista Way West and you're going to make a right onto Buena Hills, you're worried if you're going to get rear-ended because the traffic's moving so quickly there. But I think 18 new homes in there is going to be just a major, major problem with the traffic, nothing else.
Great, appreciate it, sir. Thank you. Did I miss anybody else? Anybody else like to come forward before I truly close the public hearing? Apologies for that. Okay. We've closed the public hearing, so we'll bring it back to the commission for deliberation or a motion. They'll entertain either. Commissioner Ballmer, you look like you want to say something? Jump in?
No, I'm just going to make a motion. I mean, I can see the traffic concerns, but I know our traffic engineering department's pretty thorough when it comes to stuff like this. I do travel Vista Way and he's right about the traffic, but then isn't that everywhere now? It's like, people are always driving too fast. It's like getting out of control. But anyway, I guess I will, if there's no other discussions or no other ideas, then I will, I would like to make a recommendation that we confirm issuance of a category exemption for SEQA and Article 19, Section 15, 332, and approved tentative map development plan and density bonus by adopting the planning commission resolution number 23P17 with findings and conditions approved attached herein.
Thank you. We have a motion to the motion maker. Are you comfortable with adding to your motion the suggestion that staff have the traffic engineer take another look at it? Granted that we've now seen it and we've registered our concern about the traffic coming in and out of the project. So I'm sure that, like you said, they do good work, but would you like to add that?
If it's just for them to take a second look.
Yeah.
I'd say that's not, that's not no harm, no foul, basically. We could definitely add that to the motion, that staff would maybe take a second look at that and maybe review the idea of different striping methods or if a raised medium, like you said, might not work, but just something to take a look at everything to see, make sure we've done the right thing for these, these homes.
I could offer perhaps some language that suggests the traffic engineering division during the final, review of final engineering documents, consider alternative means to restrict movement in and out of the project, something to that nature. Is that comfortable? Are you comfortable with that?
That would work for me. So some additional controls and review would be terrific.
All right. Sounds good.
Okay, thank you. So with that motion, I'll look for a second. I'll second. I'm sure Dodds will second that motion. Let's go ahead and vote.
Let the record show that the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
I have to say, I do like the architecture on this. It's kind of small and it's got its own little style, so you guys did get on the design, I thought. That was kind of a nice, you know? I liked it.
Okay. That leaves us with one discussion item for this evening, a presentation by Brian Thomas, a city engineer, on the CIP Capital Improvement Project Budget General Plan for fiscal year 2324. Good evening, Brian.
Good evening, Honorable Commissioner and Honorable Chair and Commissioners. Please forgive us, we've been short-staffed for a while and our principal civil engineer has retired, so Kimberly will be taking over for us. This is a housekeeping item that we bring forth every year for our capital improvement project program. So we will give a very high-level overview of our CIP projects. We are here to answer any specific questions you may have. With that, I'll turn it over to Kimberly.
Thank you, Brian. Good evening, planning commission. My name's Kimberly Corbin. I'm an associate engineer with the Development Services Department and I'm here to present the capital improvement project proposed budget for fiscal year 2324. As Brian mentioned, I will keep it very high level, but please, at the end, don't be afraid to ask for me to go back and ask any specific questions. So basically over for a big high level is there's several CIP programs that fund our CIP projects. Those include Transnet, Thoroughfare, and everything as mentioned there. We have for fiscal year 2324 budget, we have 158,000, or 158,991,932 estimated expenditures. So here's a pie chart of how each of those programs are expected to be expended. We also receive funding from our developer impact fees. Those include the thoroughfare signal fees, the citywide drainage fees, the park fees, and the public facility fees. Those make up about 30% of our revenues. But please keep in mind, if development projects decrease, our developer impact fees will also decrease. So that's something to keep in mind as we go through for our revenue. As far as our pavement management program, we are looking, based on the heavy rains that we received this year, we are looking to expend some of the slurry and overlay funds to fix the extensive amount of potholes around the city. The remaining of the funds will be segregated out into the four other districts. So we will have slurry seal and overlay projects for this year, but for the majority, we will be looking to fix the potholes throughout the city based on those heavy rains. One of the things that we will be looking to do this fiscal year is to redo the pavement management program, so it hasn't been redone since 2018. So we're looking to revitalize that so we have a better understanding of current pavement index for throughout the city. So here are the staff recommended projects. Again, I'll be going through real fast. So for our cap, for our miscellaneous city capital funds 501, it includes the downtown streetlight replacement, phase three. And then the other project is the Otter Bond Crossing Study. So I apologize if that is not shown. This is the presentation that was used at the budget workshop, so that didn't get added on, but it is added on. So for the municipal building program, we have the lifeguard, headquarter, harbor, civic center elevator control board, Mission Branch library remodel, library facilities items, main library signage, fire administration remodel, and fire station number eight construction. For the thoroughfare and signal program, we're looking for traffic signal, RDO and Mesa, traffic signal conduit repair, traffic signal carrying cannon, citywide traffic signal fiber optic assessment and development. For the parks, we're looking at the lake park restroom and snack bar and gazebo roof replacement, the park and rec center roof replacements, the Baldurama Center fascia, interior and exterior improvements, the El Corazon Senior Center dance floor improvements, the municipal golf course clubhouse improvements, the Baldurama Center gym, and John Landis gym improvements design. And then we also have a list of undefined projects that were in the CIP budget book, and we can go into more detail on that if you need. So as far as the water utility, unfortunately, Mabel's not here, so I'm just going to keep going high level and speeding on through. So for the proposed CIP expenditures for the water utilities, we're looking at a water fixed asset replacement, water connection, sewer fixed asset replacement and sewer connection. Those are the expenditures for fiscal year 2324. So for water and recycled water, there's 11 existing projects that are looking to be completed in fiscal year 2324. That's the downtown water pipeline replacement, phase two, mission basin well expansion and brine optimization, lower recycled conveyance and reservoir, water pipeline replacement program, waste plant improvements, advanced metering infrastructure, downtown and recycled water line condition assessment, and I could keep going. But I was going to, so basically, what we're looking to do is, last year, they completed 87 million in completed projects. They have 29 million, 29.7 million under construction currently and 74 currently in design. So they are seeking funding alternatives to offset the costs. So you can see how many, how much they have received, 28 million in grants from 2019 to 2022. They're anticipating 12 million in grants from 2023 to 2024. And then this, these next two slides really just show their advancement to their strategic goals. So basically, these are the projects and how they are here to meet their strategic goals. So like I said, just, just quick overview, so they are basically have projects and that's how they're working towards their strategic goals. For sewer, we have 15 existing projects, like that includes the Bacanera Lift Station Enforcement, the Pipeline Rehabilitation Program, the La Salina wastewater treatment upgrades, the El Corazona Lift Station, and various other lift stations and sewer replacements. They completed 9 million in fiscal year 2223. They have 29.3 million in, under construction and 154 million in design. Again, this is, they are seeking funding alternatives to offset costs. They are, they're looking up to basically 90 million in grants for this next fiscal year. Again, for their sewer strategic goals, they're working towards the centralization of water flows plans and design and replacing and rehabilitating aging infrastructure, so they keep working towards those strategic goals. Overall, the staff recommends that the planning commission adopt planning commission resolution number 2023, P dash P15, recommending city council approval of the proposed capital improvement program for fiscal year 2324. And we are here to answer any questions. Like I said, I went quick, I went fast, and like I said, I can answer any questions if needed, and our city engineer is also here to answer any questions.
A quick question. Let me ask real quickly. How much of this do you track? Like I'm interested in the overlay and the slurry miles. Is that something the city tracks? How many miles of overlay and slurry occur every year and if we're meeting those targets? And same with sewer or water line replacements? Any KPIs or performance indicators on those and how the city does? Maybe just a question for you, Brian.
Yes, thank you, Chair Rosales. We do have performance metrics. We look at the different costs involved with the number of roadway miles that get rehabilitated, whether it's through slurry seal or actual reconstruction. As you can imagine, our slurry seal is pennies on the dollar for resurfacing to help prolong our streets. The repair with full-depth reclamation or even more difficult repair work takes much more money, as much as $30 a square foot to. more money, as much as $30 a square foot to resolve the issue as opposed to 30 cents a square foot for slurry seal. So when we're looking at the slurry seal, we can do roughly 30 to 70 lane miles each year. Sometimes it's more, depending on how bad the streets are when we get to them to treat this treatment. But when we come to the, the overlay projects and the full-depth reclamation, depending on the cost, we're only getting two, three, four miles of rehabilitation out of those just based on the, the 10 to 12 million dollars we get annually. So, and then for the second part of your question regarding the sewer line, the water utilities department has various programs in place to help them monitor through their sewer master plan, their water master plan, their aging infrastructure, what do we need to replace? One of the slides showed a 44% goal for self-reliance on water. Our city council's goal was to be 50% reliant by 2030. However, we felt as staff, it was more important to rehabilitate some of the more aging infrastructure rather than to meet this artificial goal of 50%. So based on our conversations with city council, this is the direction we're going with, 44% by 2030, fix the aging infrastructure, and then within the next two or three years, try to meet that 50% goal.
And that's sort of the moving target or look at every year is done by staff because priorities change or conditions change. So, yeah.
Yes. Like a good example this year with the abundant rain that we've had, which we've needed, we had to change our pavement rehabilitation program on the fly, change some streets that were required to be slurry sealed to more robust replacement just because of the number of potholes and variety of other issues. So our dollars are big this year, but what we can do is in is what, what we'd hope to get done early on, so.
Right. Commissioner Malick, and then we'll go to Vice Chair Morrissey.
Yeah. If you could just go back to the pie chart, I wanted to see how the overall budget kind of laid out. Blew that pretty quickly and recognizing that a good chunk of that is for sewer repairs. And then I guess this is another city engineer question as well is what percentage of this, if any, is for emergency repairs? Because you've got these things that happen, whether it's a water main break or other things with the aging infrastructure that we have. Is there any set aside funds for those emergency repairs so that we're not taken completely out of either rehabilitation work or new work that we need to rob from Peter to pay Paul?
Yes. Commissioner Malick, we maintain a reserve account for everything we do. So in the event that we do have emergencies, we pull from those rather than rob Peter to pay Paul. So a lot of the rehabilitation projects that we have in process are to replace some of this aging infrastructure, but sometimes it breaks before we can get to them, so.
Thanks. Commissioner or Vice Chair Morrissey?
The sewage treatment plant near Buccaneer, is there a plan for that to be shuttered down at some point? I'd heard that, but I have, you may have mentioned it and I just missed it.
Yeah, it's the La Salina wastewater treatment plant. That's the one near Buccaneer. And from my understanding is that plant will be shut down. They are going to be turning it into a lift station, and I can let Brian elaborate on that project a little bit more.
Thank you, Kimberly. Vice Chair Morrissey, the plan is within the next five years to decommission the La Salina Treatment Plant. But in order to do that first, we have to complete the lift station pipeline and network to take the effluent from the La Salina area all the way out to the San Luis Rey River area. This involves a number of lift stations. One of the newest lift stations we're looking at is the Garrison Creek Lift Station in addition to the Oceanside Boulevard Lift Station. So when these things get completed and we get all the pipelines installed, then we can start on the lift station at La Salina and then start decommissioning the process out there. So five years is what our target date is.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Commissioner Obama?
As far as the Oceanside Lift Station, that turned out really nice, the architecture. Remember, we were involved in that one.
Yeah.
I kind of think that, that having that little kind of extra architecture kind of made it look cool, you know? I think it looks good. So I think that the future ones, you guys kind of, kind of dress them up a little bit because that doesn't really look like a bad, you know, situation right there, right? So I thought, so I commend you for that. That's a great thing. Where's Fire Station Eight? I know that was on one of your slides.
Yeah. So Fire Station Eight is on the corner of Old Grove Road and basically college. So be, that's the location of the.
Oh, that one.
Bank.
Right.
And then next to that, where Trestles meets Old Grove, that's where the corner of Fire Station Eight would be.
So it's kind of getting rehabilitated or, because one of the older ones or what?
Right now, we lease a building for Fire Station Eight. So basically, that is an empty lot that the city owns, and so we will be constructing a new fire station at that location so that we can expire our current lease where we're leasing.
Okay.
Commissioner Obama, that site is also to be shared with a new recycled water tank. So half of it will be Fire Station, half of it will be recycled water in the area.
That's good. I like that, too. Coming closer to the farmers. That's good. I think that's all my, oh, what I did see was a lot of Measure X funding, and I know that's kind of a thing that could go away. It sounds like, just from what I, even on here, 21 million, you know, it's a lot of money that the city's been depending on now. So that's going to be a really hard, you know, situation if it does go away. So it's going to have to be a political football again coming up on that one.
Yeah. It's nice to have funding.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Okay. It's a discussion item, but we do provide an opportunity for the public to weigh in if they'd like to on this item. Any slips?
Rosales, we do not have any slips on this item.
Okay. Those in the audience, if you'd like to comment on this, before I close it out, you're welcome to come forward. See, nobody leaving their seats. We will bring them back here. We have been asked to adopt a resolution related to this, which would get forwarded to the city council for their approval. So in your package, it lists the resolution number if somebody would like to make a motion. And it's on your screen there, too. Yeah. Go ahead. Yeah.
We recommend that the, the planning commission recommends we adopt planning, planning commission resolution number 2023 P-15, recommending city council approve, approval of the proposal capital improvement program for FY 23 and 24.
Thank you. Commissioner Malik's made a motion for approval of the resolution. Second?
I'll second.
And Vice Chair Morrissey's second. Thank you, Kimberly. Thank you, Brian. We're going to vote.
Chair Rosales, let the record show that the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job. Thank you, Mabel. You did a great job, too.
All right. We'll go to the last item on the agenda, and that's commissioner and city planner reports. I don't believe I have anything coming for, or anything to share. I am looking forward to city planners' schedule of upcoming events. See what we have going on. Vice Chair Morrissey?
And if Vista Way would go all the way to South Pacific, the city put in a light standard there at the stairways, stairwell that goes down.
Yeah.
And that's a solar light, and it's been out for a while. And Sergio, I did not take your recommendation, but I need to do that. I've actually, actually, you know, going to the, the city website and reporting a problem. But for the last six months, I've been going in and, what department would that be on or would take care of that?
Vice Chair Morrissey, that would be the Public Works Department.
Public Works? Okay. Does the city have the Get It Done app?
We do. There's an app right on the, it's the first, it's right on the homepage. It says, "Report a Problem." You click on that, and you can register, I believe, and you can report that issue. You can also download it to your phone and report any issues that way.
Yeah. It has sent things to the head of Public Works and, but anyway, I'll do that next. Thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Obama?
I would just like to invite you all to the California Surf Museum with this new exhibit on the science of surfing. So it's really good. It's a great educational exhibit. We've got lots of educators now that's being, they're coming in with, we've provided teachers with, what are those called when they have a plan? They have to have plans. We've provided them with plans, whatever those are called.
Lesson plans.
Lesson plans. Thank you so much. I'm not a teacher. So anyway, so it's a really good exhibit. It's really greatly, it's the illustrator, the illustrations that were done for that exhibit are exceptional. So if you guys get a chance to go into the surf museum and learn a little bit about how waves appear on the beach.
Thank you. Commissioner Anthony? Any, anything to report? Or you'd like to chime in with anything? This is your forum time.
Wow, I get a spot?
Well, you know, if you go too crazy, I'll cut you off, but.
No, I don't have anything.
Nothing to report. Thank you. Commissioner Dodds?
Nothing to report, really.
Commissioner Simons?
Sure. We are kind of short notice getting, moving out to Ohio, so I'm going to resign my position here on the commission, and this will be my last meeting. Because I feel like for selling, if I'm selling a place, I know I'm not going to live here. I probably shouldn't be on the planning commission. So this will be it for me. Been a pleasure serving here, learned a ton, met a lot of nice folks here, and hopefully contributed a little bit to the city. Thank you.
Can, can we get you to stay until you've actually sold the house or you, it's going to sell on its own while you move out to Ohio?
Oh, no, no. I'll be here, you know, throughout.
Yeah. If, if that, if that works for you, we'd like to keep you on until you absolutely have to go?
Sure. Yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
Have you found Outrigger paddling in Ohio?
Oh, I'm right, I'm right on Lake Erie, so.
Oh, good.
I'll be the founding member of the Lake Erie Canoe Club.
Yeah.
I'll start a Facebook page.
Yeah, yeah.
You can watch, we dressed up in cold weather paddling here. It's cold weather, right?
Wow. Commissioner Malick?
Nothing. Thank you.
Okay, Sergio, floor's yours.
Thank you, Chair Rosales. So upcoming items for the planning commission at our next meeting, we will consider the, no public hearing items, but we're going to consider the, the work plan for the next two fiscal years for the planning commission and a much anticipated update on Brother Benno's. So just a way of background, I had a conversation with Captain Valdo Vinos last week, and surprisingly enough, he's reports that things are really improving out there, and Brother Benno's is actually doing a, despite of the emails, despite the content of the emails that we received, conditions on the ground are actually improving, and the changes that they've implemented have seeming, are seemingly working. And it seems that Brother Benno's is making another concerted effort to address what they can. So we'll have an official report for you at our next meeting on the status of Brother Benno's and give the opportunity for the planning commission to provide any direction that they see fit after they hear the report from the police department.
Will you be notifying the park?
We will notify those, those, those folks that we've heard from. Yeah. Yeah. Even though it's not a notice, public hearing, I think we'll make sure we reach out to them. Yes. We don't have any items scheduled for the month of June at this point, so we may go dark in June. We'll see if anything comes up. I know the noticing deadlines are coming up fairly shortly, but nothing to report for June. Moving on to city council items that are going to be considered shortly on, at the meeting of the May 17th, we discussed this a couple times, a mixed-use project at 901 Pierview Way here into downtown, consists of 64 housing units and about 3,000 square feet of dedicated retail space at 901 Pierview Way. And an item that this commission considered a month or so ago, the Oceanside Smoke Shop regulated use, conditional use permit will be considered at that meeting also. Moving on to the meeting of June 21st, there's no items for the first meeting in June. We have two appeals. One would, is the appeal of a project known as the Tremont in the 1900 block of Tremont Street. That's been appealed, and that will be considered. And also, the appeal of the Madera Melrose project that was appealed by Safer, the Safer folks. Speaking of which, Safer also appealed the approval of the Oceanside Boulevard Commercial District project at El Corazon. So that, that project's still to be scheduled. Also at that meeting, the city council considered planning commission work plan for the next two fiscal years and the work plan and updated bylaws for the downtown advisory committee. So that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Sergio. Then we are adjourned.